Call this meeting to order at 7:03. Please rise and join me to say I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Committee's first order of business is to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
The agenda passes. Can I have a motion to approve the open session minutes of October 15, 2018?
Did you get them?
No.
Okay, I apologize. I looked at my email today. I think I sent them to your wife by mistake.
Oh, it's okay.
So I apologize for that.
She's probably confused.
I will forward them to you.
Could I propose her make a motion if we vote on that the next meeting?
Table.
Okay, I apologize. I just saw that.
Oh, no worries. No worries. I was looking all over the place for it tonight, so.
All right. Motion to table is on the floor. Can I have a second?
Sir.
All right. All those in favor of tabling your minutes until the next meeting?
Aye.
Next to your student comments, but do not.
Yeah, we're anticipating Lilly Bigelow to be here. Lilly, this is her first meeting. So maybe she shows up late. Hi Lilly.
Perfect.
Were you there to ring or anything? We were just talking about you because we're actually at the portion of the agenda. Not to put you on the spot or anything.
You're sorry of being late.
It's okay. It's perfectly fine. Welcome Lilly. It's absolutely wonderful to have you here.
I'm very glad to be here.
We always look forward to this portion of the meeting where usually a NIMC student gives some comments about what's been happening in NIMC and so on and so forth. So please feel free, if you have some comments or a report, to do it in.
Sure. So hi, I'm Lilly Bigelow. I'm 15 and I'm a 10th grader and I'm very excited to be here. I love being part of the community and I love seeing how NIMC can change, so I can't wait to hear what everyone says.
Next on the agenda, we have community comments. Anyone have comments to address to the committee? Here I don't see none. We shall move on to the superintendent's comments.
All right. Well, good evening. First thing that I'd like to highlight is our continued fruitful partnership with the Blackstone Valley Ed Foundation. One of the thrusts in recent years is to provide more STEM opportunities and more career exploration opportunities, particularly targeting middle school students. So I'd like to just highlight something that I thought was really successful. A couple of weeks ago, on the 23rd, the Blackstone Valley Ed Foundation partnered with Dell EMC to host approximately 40 middle school students for a STEM exploration day. So as you can see on the board, here's nine of our best and brightest from grade seven who were part of the day of presentations, company tours, and panel discussions by various employees of Dell EMC. So I think something like this is really a terrific investment for our students and it kind of gives them the bigger picture as far as looking at what type of career opportunities there are out there in STEM. And as I say in the background notes, the intent of the Ed Foundation is to create more opportunities from businesses here in the valley. And they've already planned similar experiences with the Waters Corporation, United Global Packaging, and the research and development facility of St. Gobe. So a nice little thing to highlight as far as an opportunity for our students. Secondly, just as an update to the committee, I know we discussed last, I believe it was in May, looking at doing an alternative to traditional snow days. So I have for your consideration the list of about a dozen districts so far that have moved forward with either a full adoption or pilot of an alternative structure, something that would be based upon, probably for most of our students, some type of online connection, online learning. So I had the first meeting on October 16th. We had a really good turnout of about 44 parents and staff members. I gave them an overview of what current guidance from the Department of Ed says and really had them just brainstorm upon two real simple ideas. What questions do you have about this and what type of doubts would you have about implementing such a system? So a pretty concise meeting, only about an hour, hour fifteen, and from that we have a smaller working committee of about 20 individuals who are now going to take the larger group's questions and doubts and try to create a framework of what this alternative structure could actually look like. Okay, as I say, the devil is in the proverbial details and I think there's a lot of pieces to be considered, but our goal is to bring something forward to this committee sometime next month before the real inclement weather starts. And keep in mind, this is something that we would ease into gradually. We're not looking to say, okay, starting with the first snowflake, we're going to go to this type of alternative structure. This is something that we would ease into very much during the 18, 19 school year, very much as a tie.
So how would you propose to ease into it? By subjecting it to some setting?
You know, the different districts that have evolved have put guardrails, for lack of a better term, on it where they, some districts have said, okay, we're not going to do the alternative structure until at least the third snow day or maybe until the fifth snow day. So conceivably, even moving forward with this, we might not implement a first alternative structure day until March, conceivably, depending on, you know, type of winter that we have. So a lot of considerations. There's contractual considerations with all five of our associations. There's things like our busing contract to consider, so there's a whole host of pragmatic considerations. But this smaller working group we plan on meeting a week from tomorrow to start a little further with that. Anybody on the school committee, you're more than welcome to attend. That meeting is going to be at 6 o'clock at Misco, in the Misco teacher's room.
Which day again? I'm sorry.
A week from tomorrow, Tuesday the 13th.
Doctor, I know you're convinced of your comments. Would it be possible just to amend the agenda for a second? I think Lilly had a few more comments and then a hubbub coming in we didn't quite, I didn't quite prepping. We could write off the top like that.
Absolutely.
I'll just say, I'm going to invite myself to the table too. That's okay. We are so thrilled that Lilly is one of our reps. Lilly, from the first moment's being in our school, has done a phenomenal job as a student leader. I told her and I probably embarrassed her at our last lead learner meeting that she's the owner of my favorite moment of all of our lead learner meetings last year, when in the midst of a conversation in our October meeting, it was veteran faculty members and students working together and we came time to present out the work and here was Lilly who had been in the school for about three or four weeks and she was presenting for the entire group of educators and has stepped up and for moment one, just done a phenomenal job as a leader and a citizen at the school and someone who's really making an impact. So we're thrilled to have her. She'll be joined by Joe Aziz. Joe is on the JV football team, which is in Okmont, which he's going to probably get home, I don't know, sometime, sometime when it's even darker, if that's possible, because he's traveling out to Okmont tonight. He would be here otherwise, but I know they're both really excited to be here. And Lilly had a few more comments, if that's okay, to share.
Great. So I just wanted to discuss what NIMC has done in the past couple of weeks. So on October 9th, we held our first lead learner meeting of the year. So Mrs. Moran and Mr. Clemmons and students and faculty members, we all came together and we tried to reimagine what else could be possible during these 21st century learning conferences. And a lot of great ideas came out of the brainstorming and that included collaborating with other schools in the district. And our hope is to have multiple schools involved during our June conference at the end of the year. We also had our community advisory board meeting on October 24th and this met with faculty members and students from NIMC as well as parents and represented students from grades 3K through 11th grade. We explored the MRSD portrait of a graduate and we worked in small groups to develop experiences that students could have in order to explore, practice, and master the portrait of a graduate competencies. We also, on January 23rd, we will host our 7th 21st Century Learning Conference. And to get us ready for this, we will have a school-wide brainstorming event, faculty and staff members. And on November 7th this month, to share ideas on what we'd like to learn on conference days and at these times, student and staff will be invited to the main lobby to brainstorm. The question that will be asked is, if you had an hour, a half day, or one full day to explore the MRSD portrait of a graduate, what would you do? What experience would you want to have? And students and staff members will be able to just share these ideas and post it on a banner and then just contribute. So this is what we've done and I'm very excited to share with you guys.
And contributes to white work for Lilly. She's been an active participant in all of these meetings and is always looking to step up, so we're thrilled to have you aboard. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much Lilly.
I believe you're welcome to stay for a little while, but if you have homework, you can dismiss yourself at a certain point, feel free to.
Thanks for all that pressure.
The first time you introduced yourself was fantastic, so great to have, thanks.
So now we're going to go dramatically downhill and I'm going to talk about the FYNT home school report. No, as I say in the background notes, per our own policy, IHGB on home instruction, you do have in your packet a copy of the current school year home instruction report. As I say in the background notes, we have this year in our two communities, a total of 22 students that are receiving home instruction. And as it has typically been, at least during my eight years here, a heavy predominance more from Upton than Mendon, 17 from Upton and five from Mendon. That comes out to be three fewer than there were last school year. We're in very, very good shape with regard to our parents working with the school district as far as having approved home instruction programs, as right now there's only one that is still pending. And then last but not least, you also have in your packet the latest year-to-date expenditure report for the current fiscal year. Jay, are there any lines in our operational budget that you'd like to highlight?
Sure. I just want to make sure you all know that we have spent nothing on snow and ice so far. I think that's important to note at every meeting. No, basically this time of year, what I worry about most is building maintenance. We just turned the heat on in the last couple of weeks and now everything that potentially is going to break is going to break, so that's what we're dealing with. Also, just an update, we have spent around $25,000 so far at Clough on the water treatment system, stuff mandated by DEP in order to modernize the system. It seems like a running tally that continues to grow. We pretty much have to do what they tell us. It doesn't mean there was anything wrong with the system prior to that, they just want it to be current to today as opposed to the stuff that was put in 15 years ago. Other than that, things are status quo for now.
Okay, that's what I have now, Chair. Moving on to subcommittee updates, the superintendent's evaluation subcommittee is slated to meet tomorrow night, correct? With a future anticipated date of November 19th for those of you in the evaluation. So members should be paying attention to their email in the next few weeks so we can get that prepared. So we wish you a productive meeting. Moving on to old business, so the amendment of the motion for capital stabilization.
So the committee took a vote back on August 27th to appropriate $337,880 out of E&amp;D excess and deficiency account to the newly established capital stabilization account for this current fiscal year. What we are requesting, and we just received this word from DOR, is to amend that vote so that the $337,880 comes out of the undesignated fund balance for the simple reason that our E&amp;D has not yet been certified by DOR. So the fact that it's not an official tally, technically we should take it from the undesignated fund balance. It's essentially a designation of accounts. Did I pretty much cover that correctly?
I would say remarkably well.
Not bad for a chem major, right? So essentially, this is just a technicality and the motion as written in your packet just details that that $337,880 is coming out of the undesignated fund balance and not excess deficiency.
Okay. So I'd like to make a motion to amend the vote, which was motion number four of August 27, 2018, as follows. To appropriate $675,760 to the Mersey Capital Stabilization Account from, number one, undesignated fund balances of $337,880 and number two, from the fiscal year 2019 MSBA revenue of
Motion's been made. All those in favor?
Aye.
motion passed unanimously. Next, we will move on to new business, the 2018 MCAS accountability results.
Okay. What I'd like to share with you tonight, as is done every year, is our MCAS results from 2018 through, what I'd like to lead with is the state's accountability system because it's a brand-new accountability system. In some ways, it's very, very similar and other ways, they've changed. But just really, really briefly, what was new is this spring was the first year that they mandated that all grades 3 through 8 take the, what is referred to as the next-generation MCAS test. I think we talked a little bit about it last year when I presented some of those results and I realized those results weren't complete for all grades 3 through 8. This year, they are. And that new next-generation assessment, that online assessment, will take place for the high school of grade 10 starting this spring. So keep in mind that 2018 is considered to be a baseline year for this new next-generation test and along with the state accountability system. As I said, that new test will take effect for the high school this coming spring. We still don't have a definitive word whether they're going to follow suit with regard to the science tests in grade 5 and 8 and the biology test in grade 10. So the accountability system changes. So I think some of the lead pieces here are the fact that for the first time, it's now including not only ELA and math testing, but also the science tests towards a school and a district's categorization. Some additional indicators beyond just strictly the MCAS score and the aggregate and the various subgroups and the SGP or student growth percentile is being considered now and I'll show you that in a couple of minutes. But essentially, the same emphasis is to raise the score of all students, but also of various subgroups, particularly your high-risk students, students that are receiving special education services and English language learners and so on, and students from poverty. So really, the categories, no longer are they labeling districts and schools level one through level five. I'll show you the categories now. However, they are changing it to next year to these three categories, meeting targets, partially meeting targets, or not meeting targets. Something that I do think is positive is the districts are no longer classified as based upon their lowest classification school. So for those of you who've been on the committee for some time, you probably know that we've been a level two district, however, three of our four schools have been level one schools, but because one has been a level two school, the whole district is categorized that way. So they've eliminated that and for this current year, they've only used 2018 data. Out of fairness, I think what you're going to see is as the system moves forward, they will use a rolling average in three or five years. So kind of interesting. So what are the factors that they're looking at in making categorizations around schools? For elementary and middle schools, they're looking at these four things, MCAS scores, the SGP's or student growth percentiles, the number of kids that are moving towards proficiency as English language learners, and then they're looking at chronic absenteeism. And chronic absenteeism is defined as students missing 10 or more school days throughout the school year. And I will throw in this caveat, there is no distinction or excuse or reason, it's just classified 10 days, is 10 days, is 10 days, refers to chronic absenteeism. If you'll note, you might be saying to yourself, hey, Joe, why does one say 0%? I made that applicable to Mendon-Upton. It's actually 10%, okay? But in the case of Mendon-Upton, we did not have a grand total of 20 kids that are English language learners take the test. We had 18. However, I'm told that this year we will have 20, so actually that'll be 10%. The SGP's drops down to 20% and the MCAS scores would still be 60%. As you can see, you still have a predominance of accountability factors. In our case, 90% are strictly based upon MCAS scores. So for high schools, it's the same factors, however, two other factors are thrown in. Not only absenteeism, but the percentage of your students that are taking advanced-level courses and then high school completion, that would be defined as the students that are graduating at least five years. So how are schools categorized? Really, kind of looking at this in two big categories, schools that do not require assistance or intervention and then schools that do require assistance or intervention. Seeing that the overwhelming majority of schools, 85%, are in that first category, there's also a breakdown of either meeting targets or partially meeting targets. Same thing with categorization of districts, districts without required assistance or intervention and then districts requiring assistance or interventions and again, meeting targets and partially meeting targets as a subcategorization. So there is also kind of a numeric categorization, one being a normative component, that is essentially ranking schools out of 1 to 99 percentile. And essentially what it's doing is it's measuring a school as measured to comparable schools, so you'd be measured versus other high schools, versus other middle schools or elementary schools on the continuum across the state. And then the next one, which is a bit confusing, and if you look in your packet, I gave you a summary document of the accountability system that is a summary, it's a nine-page document, which is kind of interesting, but it gets into the specifics of how they come up with this criterion reference component, which is again, a numeric value that ranks how well a school is progressing towards meeting all of its targets. Essentially, a number to keep in mind is 75. If that percentage is 75, it means every single target has been met. If it's over 75, it means targets have been exceeded. And if it's under 75, it means not all targets have been met. Keep in mind, those are all the targets for aggregate, but also various subgroups. So in looking at where we are based upon this one year of data, all of our schools in our district are in that first larger category of not requiring assistance or intervention, but you see a disparity as far as where our schools are with regard to their percentile, as far as their accountability, that normative factor of how they rank statewide, and then the progress towards the targets. So as you can see, overall, across all of our schools, we're only partially meeting the targets that have been established. So looking at first, and again, one year of data across the board for 3 through 8, so I have not shown the historical data for ELA and math for grades 3 through 8 because it's a little bit of an apples and oranges comparison with the test, but you see the numbers there as far as, again, with this new test where you don't have the classifications of advanced, proficient, warning, and so on, instead it's exceeding expectations, meeting expectations, nearly meeting expectations, not meeting expectations. You see our percentages with regard to our students meeting or exceeding those expectations and then what the state average is in comparison. And then the SGP, keep in mind, anywhere between 40 to 60 is considered to be typical growth in looking at a meeting. And for our math scores, again, meeting and exceeding and then versus the state average and also the median in SGP for each of those grades. So our science and technology results, you see them there. For grade 10, it would be the biology test, which is given to our freshmen, correct, John? And so because this is an apples-to-apples comparison, you can see the 10-year trend for, in green, is the 5th grade at Misco and the blue being the state average. Grade 8, again, Misco versus the state average. And then NIMC, same set of data. So again, this will be the last year of the MCAS legacy. As you can see, essentially the same, very, very high results as far as percent proficient, advanced, as far as ELA and mathematics, and SGP, which is in the moderate range. And again, the historical data, keep in mind, there's one blip year there, 2016, the reason for that not showing up as far as state results is because that was the year that they split with some districts choosing to administer the PARC test. So again, mathematics results. So I think the bottom line, in kind of taking all this and looking at the 2018 results, but then also through the lens of, through the lens of the new accountability system, I think there, quite frankly, there's some work to be done, particularly at specific I think there, quite frankly, there's some work to be done, particularly at some specific grade levels. Personally, I've got some concern where there's a couple different grade levels on a couple different tests where our results aren't where they should be, and particularly just looking very superficially at where they are with regard to the state average. I have a high degree of confidence in our principals, and specifically at the middle school, with Jen Mannion, who's actually started the process of analyzing specific content strands and standards in ELA and math, and starting to meet with individual pairs and teams of teachers in looking at where there's been gaps in instruction with regard to how it relates to specific standards. I think part of that analysis also has to be looking at the scope and sequence. One thing to keep in mind, particularly with regard to the mathematics piece, is the window of testing has shifted, and in some cases, you're talking about a shift to three or four weeks for the mathematics testing. Do we have the correct spoken sequence of topics taught? I think another piece that is clear here, where I do see, quite frankly, some disparities, are RTI processes and supports, or RTI efficacy as far as identifying kids that are falling behind. I think we have to look at that very, very long and hard. But I guess in the big picture, as we've talked about from the past, this is one snapshot of how the district is doing, how our four schools are doing. And in no way, shape, or form, do I want our message or our emphasis to be about a high-stakes test. I think the vision that we've elaborated upon in our new strategic plan and with all of our professional staff is, the heart of the matter is, it's about creating meaningful learning for our kids. Do I have a high degree of confidence, and I don't say this facetiously or with any snark, that if I said to a team of teachers, hey, you need to get those test scores up by 10 points or by 15 points, I have a high degree of confidence, they could do it very easily. But they would probably, and again, I don't say this negatively, they would do it based upon, you know, using strategies like drill and repetition, and giving kids multiple opportunities to take the MCAS practice tests. I don't think that's what we're about in the least bit. So I think you can have both. I think this is a conversation about ensuring that our curriculum and ensuring that our instructional practices are highly aligned with standards, and we're giving all kids rigorous and meaningful learning opportunities. But it shouldn't be about MCAS test practice. So I'm confident that the vision is there, the vision is solid. But again, this is one snapshot of our district. And I'm confident that thoughtful work is going to be done at every single level. So I know that was very, very quick, but does anybody have any questions regarding any of that?
When you say that we can get, I tend to agree with you that we can get higher test scores by practicing the test. Absolutely. And the fact that we don't, seems like we're achieving good results even though we don't practice the test. However, how much, how much gain do you think we can get in the MCAS results if we follow the current tactics? So the current, being aware that we're not performing as well as we want within the MCAS, because principals are aware of it, how much do you think we can gain in the MCAS results, given that we're aware of it? And not practicing the test and not changing our standards?
I think we could gain a significant amount, because I think that this is a conversation about a lot of the things that we've talked about, about having consistently high expectations across all grade levels. It's about being thoughtful about curriculum alignment and ensuring what you're actually teaching is what you've mapped out in our curriculum mapping documents. And then the instructional piece, that you're creating learning opportunities for kids that are aligned with those high expectations, and that are aligned with standards, that are deep and rigorous and meaningful. So I think your question is a great one, but here's my theory of action. My theory of action is, you can have both. You can have high test scores, but that shouldn't be your emphasis. That shouldn't be the tail that you're chasing, so to speak. So I think it's very, very doable, but I think unfortunately, in many, many districts across the Commonwealth, I think it's happened here, quite frankly, in the past, you can make the MCAS your emphasis. And I think there's teams of teachers at every single level who can say, oh, who can analyze the data. And I'm not, and please, to be very, very clear, I do think you should analyze the data. I think it's an important piece of the puzzle, but it's not the whole puzzle. But anyway, I think there's many, many communities, many districts where they analyze the data and they figure out, okay, how do we get this particular strand or this particular subsection of the test up? And how do they do it? Okay, well, we're going to give the kids more practice. Well, what does that practice look like? Well, the practice might look like more worksheets, or more practice MCAS tests, or more drill and repetition. And the point that I'm saying is, that's not meaningful learning. And I think the stake in the ground that we plant is, that's not what we're all about in this district. And I think unfortunately, Sean, there's districts that don't plant that stake in the ground. And their emphasis is about, hey, we got to keep those test scores up. I've worked in a district, I was a principal in a district, that their primary emphasis was, you got to keep those test scores up. I don't think we should be about that. So like most things in life, it's a balancing act. Do I care about our accountability rating? To a certain degree, I do. But is it the primary marker of measuring the quality of education that we're giving kids? In my humble opinion, no, it's not. So it's kind of like the balancing act. I'm not giving it the Heisman, but I'm definitely not putting it up on the pedestal.
So related to that, Joe, when you're breaking down the data, because you have these subsections of the test where you know kids have been challenged, do we kind of equate it to the curriculum? Do we look at our curriculum and not just say, okay, well, what do we cover in the curriculum, but how are our kids doing?
Yeah.
In fifth and sixth grade, like, I mean, that's where some of the areas of challenge were, particularly in ELA, I was noticing, like, do we look and we say, okay, so this is the content that we were trying to present, and if we look at the kids' assessments, yeah, they were struggling. And it's reflected in the MCAS. Is that that degree of data?
Yeah, so one of the things that Jen Mannion has started to do is, when you, you can use this program, Edwin Analytics, to go deeper in the sense that you, with the first block, you take a look at, okay, so for fifth grade math, one of the main content strands is measurement. And she takes a look at it, and she says, okay, this is the state average of how many kid, how many percentage of kids across the state got these series of questions using measurement, correct? And this is the series of Misco kids, percentage of Misco kids that got the series of measurement. So her first kind of no-brainer way of looking at the data is, where is all the content strands where we were below state average? So she's very effectively identified that. Then it becomes, okay, we've talked about looking at what we've put in place for all the different grade levels in Rubicon Atlas as far as curriculum mapping. The question becomes, okay, is the curriculum actually being followed? If it is, what are the learning opportunities that are being presented, and are they deep enough? Are they rich enough so that when a kid gets this type of problem, he or she can change what he or she has learned and adapt it for this particular problem? So that type of analysis is going on, and I think it's directly tied to curriculum, it's directly tied to instruction, and, you know, what types of learning opportunities were offered, but how deep were they? And then the other piece that we've talked about is expectations. That were the expectations rigor enough, rigorous enough? So I think it's multiple pieces of the puzzle, it's not just one thing. And then the whole piece around variability, variability from classroom to classroom. You might have instances at various grade levels where you have stark differences from one classroom to the other classroom.
And the question is specifically at how curriculum is delivered in one classroom versus the other?
Absolutely.
Do you think there's any, anything should be factored in for taking the test on a computer? We heard a lot of kids kind of complaining a little bit about glitches and things. I know overall, because this question has been asked before, that it was delivered pretty seamlessly, but I do think that there are some kids that...
It could be a factor. Could definitely be a factor. I do kind of find it interesting, looking at our three and four results, where the kids did take it on Chromebooks, versus five through eight, where it was taken on iPads, and some of the frustrations around using a virtual keyboard on a iPad. So I think that's something that we're also going to take a long hard look at as well.
Any further questions?
Yeah, I just have one comment, and it had to do with, my youngest is actually in sixth grade. There was a, we noticed a dramatic drop-off in homework, and it maybe coincidentally corresponded with the surveys that we were doing within the school district.
Perfect entree for the next agenda.
Yes, I hope so.
No, no, I'm waiting. I'm waiting. I'm going to say wait.
So we also had our teachers' conferences with, with the teachers there. And I was, I was very, I was very happy with the answer that I got, and we can talk about the team later, but they were very thoughtful about how they were trying to approach the curriculum and trying to get kids to understand what it is they're doing. So they acknowledged that they have less homework to take home, but that they were incorporating all the exercises within the class. So I think, given that this is probably the first year that they're really attempting to do something like this, I think they had a practice last year, but this is really the first year, I think, I think we have to monitor it very carefully to see if the additional practice that you would get with homework has, is maybe causing a bit of the problem. I mean, we can't say that at all. This is, after all, this is a test given last year.
It is.
So we'd have to monitor that carefully, is what I'd say. Because I think, you know, my daughter comes home from school and she's really not doing anything anymore, and that was kind of a shock to us, so...
So you've got, within the same household, as we'll be talking about, extremes on both ends of the spectrum?
I've got extremes all over the place. It's making my hair grow.
Yeah.
Grow a little bit slower.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's, you know, we're monitoring that carefully.
Sure.
Because we live it. So, so that's all I guess I would say, is we have to, I really do like the approach that they're taking, and especially for my daughter, I think it's really going to help her out a lot. But school's out on whatever, because I think fifth and sixth grade in math, and especially in math and writing to some extent, is a practice-oriented grade. So I'm a little, I'm a little concerned that if we give up on some of the practice, we might see some negative results.
Agreed. Okay, agreed.
All right, any further comments? Okay, hearing none without lovely transition, we shall segue over to the Marsby Homework Committee guidelines.
So I just want to take this opportunity to thank Maureen and the committee that was put together to really kind of tackle, take on a very, very challenging subject. I can honestly say, since my first day here in 2011, I've gotten a lot of feedback about homework, but none of it has been consistent. I've gotten, oh my God, Joe, my kid is buried, my kid is up till 2:00 in the morning doing homework, versus the exact opposite complaint. Can my kid get more homework? I think he or she does it all in school, what's the deal with that, and so on. So there's a whole multitude of opinions and attitudes, and it's a bit of a thorny issue, and I think Maureen and the committee did a very, very thoughtful job in kind of processing everything, looking at data, and coming up with what I believe are some really viable guidelines. So Maureen?
Thank you. And I can project up there, I think you just have to, you know, it's not sure.
I'll...
Just basically see if you have...
Exactly.
Are you able to see it?
Yeah, you know what, I'm not going to help you out.
You're not allowing me to do it.
Not such a bad guy, after all, am I?
Right, so you can go to the next slide. The best part is I get to host around.
I get lost around at home, yet at work.
Well, first, I also want to thank the members of the Homework With You Committee. We had a comprehensive team involved, we had many teams involved, teachers across the district who volunteered their time, administrators from all the buildings, and parents as well who were involved in the work. And I would say, I mean, everyone gave incredible input, but having the students around the table, I mean, they completely changed our minds on things, added just details and examples, got further information just kind of from the ground. It was just incredible. I can't thank them enough, the students that contributed to the work as well. Next slide. So we started off, and we were clear with our goals with the committee, we were going to assess our current homework practices, get a sense of what is actually going on. We were going to look at any of our district vision, beliefs about homework, our own beliefs about homework, analyze current research on homework practices. And then our goal was to first develop a new vision for homework, so we'll touch base on that, but we went further and talked about beliefs, purpose, and implementation guidelines and best practices for us committee. So how did we get here? I know many of you are aware, but for anyone who might be watching at home, we've had many conversations over the last couple of years about homework. It came up in our K-12 survey, it's a K-12 and mid survey. It definitely showed up at every single meeting we had last year for the food, lunches. I'll share some information from that in a bit. It's definitely connected to conversations with our strategic plan, lots of feedback from parents, either just anecdotes or talking to parents, but also through different surveys. And also because of our alignment and wanting to provide better SEL support, social learning, it's closely connected to that as well. So with the process, I'm not going to go through all this, but I'm going to be giving you some highlights, and wanted to just share that we did really have an in-depth process and we kind of worked in parts, so they, they really had to go through a lot of data, do a lot of data and research, a lot of analysis of the data, looking at our beliefs. We did a SLICE protocol where we looked at homework across the district, was one of the persons who did, and we had some consensus building activities around beliefs and vision, and a SWOT analysis, we've been able to make that in the past, we did a SWOT analysis around homework based off the data. So we worked with a lot of protocols to come out with the final document that I'm going to be looking at tonight. And I'm going to go through all of this, but a big resource that we used was this rethinking homework. If anyone wants to really learn everything, anything about homework and the history of it, and best practices, et cetera... this is the number one source of anything that I have come across. And one thing that was interesting, we have gone through swings throughout all of history in regards to homework. So there have been times when we've been pro homework, and it has it up there, why we wanted to have that at different times in history. And then, there have been times when we're anti-homework, often in reaction to the swing of the pendulum of the homework. So if you go to kind of the bottom there, when we had the child left behind, race to the top, there's increase in homework at that time. Many of us went through a lot of the pro homework time when we were kids. So we, our own personal beliefs as adults at the ages that we're at right now were, had influenced by our own experiences, whether or not we were in that era of pro homework or anti-homework. So just wanted to kind of set the stage that this goes back and forth. And our goal, a lot of people say here, "Oh, we're talking about homework. Oh, so we're just going to get rid of homework." That's always the first thing people say. No, it's not, we're not going for students. We're looking for what's the best balance approach for our district, and based on our own needs and our feedback to address. So it's not, okay, we want to increase it to this, or we want to get rid of everything. We want to have really thoughtful, thoughtful processes. To go to the next slide. Something else that was really interesting that she goes into great depth in the book, but we talked about in one of our first meetings, we needed to, the cultural beliefs about homework. And you don't answer it, but if you look at those beliefs, there are probably either at some point in your life, or maybe now, you may look up there and think, "Oh yeah, I think that, I believe that." So there, you know, at times, we discussed our own experiences with homework, and I even modeled mine of what it was for me as a student, how I actually really liked homework. And then, later on, I really didn't. I thought it was great, I loved going home to do homework, right? So that was me, that was my house experience. But then, we talked about when I was a teacher, and I thought we had to give a lot of homework and show I was very rigorous. But then, I became an AP teacher, and I just buried my kids with homework. And then, I became a parent, and I know we've talked about this, I became a parent and read up more on research about homework. And then, I realized, oh wow, I feel so bad. I want to apologize to all the students, I did that too. And I could have managed it better. So I told my story, but we all have our own stories. A lot of this, sometimes there are people, for example, who think there's lots of homework is a sign of a really rigorous parent. Maybe sometimes you may have a rigorous parent who can be in lots of homework, or a rigorous parent who can have a lot of homework. But, or the first one is the role of schools to extend learning beyond the classroom. There are these thoughts, and sometimes the teachers have had it, "Well, yeah, but you need to do your homework, how to do that." Or, "I'm a good teacher, I give homework." You know, good students do homework. And if they don't do homework, well, then they're not a good student. And there are all these beliefs that we've grown up with, and it doesn't necessarily make them right or wrong, but just to recognize that we're influenced by it. And we talk about, this is a highly charged topic, because everyone's had homework, we've all had our experiences. So that's what's helpful about that. So with the research, with research, you can actually find pretty much any research on homework to support whatever side you want to use. So we'll start with that. Everyone openly says that overall, there is conflicting research out there on homework, but it has been tracked over time, and there are a few researchers who have really covered it a lot. What I pulled out were, I would say, some pieces of the research that we found to be compelling to really think about in our work. And so, one, to recognize that homework has shown some positive correlations with achievement, but not, they said not causation. So it's not if I give you more homework, you're necessarily going to do better. But maybe the types of homework, there have been some studies that show there are correlations. The largest ones are in grades 10 through 12. It's less than grades 6 through 9, and there's almost no correlation in grades 3 through 5. At each grade level, there appears to be a maximum optimum amount of homework, like time that you should be spending. So in grades 6 through 9, less than an hour. In grade 10 through 12, if you go past 90 minutes to 12 hours a night, then it's not going to have greater effects in your achievement, and it could be detrimental. And we jumped to the bottom, I might have to put that right next there. There's, has been no evidence that any amount of homework at the elementary level actually really influences your academic performance. So that's, you know, at the younger grades. Now, a small amount of homework may be good for learning, but too much homework, they know, and there's proof that it's bad for learning. So it's about finding the right balance at the right age. So there isn't some exact science. In some districts, you know, previous district I worked in, I had worked on a homework policy 10 years ago. And we all went through, worked on a policy, came up with a 10-minute rule, which we had heard that for every grade, it should be about 10 minutes amount of time. There's a little bit of research to support it. But what we had found, after that was put in place in the policy, teachers were giving homework because they felt compelled to meet that requirement. So sometimes, when you put things in writing, you have to think it's that unintended consequence that you don't necessarily expect may happen, and they ended up going through and changing that. So there's lots of research. If you go to the data collection, now, we could spend hours looking at everything for the data. I'm not going to do that, but I wanted to pull up some highlights that I thought really spoke to the conversations that we had. One, this is one example from the Food for Thought lunches. And when they did the word clouds for a number of the different questions they had asked students of last year, homework is always the largest. I had attended many of the Food for Thought lunches last year. And really, what resonated with me was some of the comments that they wished their teachers knew. The students-
Interesting question. General to our own opinion.
And what's your answer?
Homework isn't always needed, or they want you just to know that I have a life outside of school. And sometimes, we, as educators, going back to the beliefs, we think that, well, this is part of your life, is that you need to be doing homework. But there's also the non-academic life that's equally as important to many students. So, you know, you have someone who is taking three hours of data, but that's their passion and their joy and their love and their future too. So it's balancing that out, and students really spoke to that. Go to the next one. This is probably too small for you to see, I'm sorry. I'm going to explain there. But basically, I pulled out, and I know you received this, but I pulled out just a couple comparisons. There are tons of them, but I, these really spoke to us. The first one says, "How often do you differentiate or personalize homework based on your students' needs?" And so, what we found, the teachers said, and what we found, parents were saying. And one of the results of this data that came out was the need to differentiate and individualize more than they are. So that came out of a lot of the data we looked at. And also, "How often do you provide direct action or feedback to your students based on the homework?" And that was another point that we found, and you'll see it showing up in our guidelines, that we would like to have more feedback being shared with the students. So you get some feedback saying, you know, "I do this work, but we never go over it." And then, "So why do I do it?" And I didn't get any feedback on it. And you know, like Catty's research, the more feedback you get, the more self-reflection and the feedback that you're getting has targeted, and your achievement's going to go up if you're getting that targeted growth in feedback. So that's an area where we certainly would want to see a little bit more on. If we go to the next slide, what we found, a topic that came up had to do with, we kind of wanted to know how often are people assigning it over vacation weeks? And we, you know, a different mixed results. On the left there, in the red, it says no, and the blue is yes, for those watching at home. But have you assigned homework over a vacation week? So that's a teacher response, and it's marked 50/50 of parents thinking that their child has ever been assigned homework over vacation weeks. And then, in some of the comments, teachers and parents, teachers explained further. We asked them to explain if they did, what did it look like? Was it a fair amount of inky review? Sometimes homework would be optional, you know, it was optional. Sometimes they would give an assignment before, and then you would have time over the break, but you didn't have to do it over the break. And some, on the parent's side said, "That's great." Others said, you know, it was a range, but the three comments there kind of spoke to some of the highlights there. If you go to the next one. But that's also a topic that we addressed. So what we found in the K-12 parent feedback, and we had a lot of open-ended questions, what I tried to do is pull out some categories that we ended up addressing that I thought were representative. The first one talks about feedback and purpose. I don't know if any of you wrote this, but I love this, this is awesome. Our kids need to be lifelong learners. I'm going to read this one. Creating this desire begins in kindergarten, is emphasized all the way up through 12th grade. As a district, I think we need to be mindful each step of the way not to steal their level of learning from them. Rather, we need to nurture their natural curiosity and desire for it. So we need them excited about the challenges of doing good work. Their assignments should fuel their hearts, not demotivate them. The grade is not the goal, but learning is the goal. That, for me, so I got to choose what goes in the presentation, but that, for me, summed up the alignment to the strategic plan and what we want. And it gets to, when we talk about meaningful homework and inquiry, that really spoke to us, comments like that. Communication definitely came up as an area of concern. The communication at the school hours and periods. We might have gotten assignments by Google Doc or email on Sunday afternoons. They worked on it, and then effectively pushing the time to receive further assignments. That was something that came up in particular by the students that were on the committee explaining how in Google Classroom, you might get assignments showing up, but it would be after the end of the school day. And so that was something that the committee felt that we really needed to address. Consistency, this has come up in K-12 insight. Grade levels should be consistent on their homework amounts. Timing, a lot of students did, lots of assignments in class were assigned toward the end of the term. And I know that happens pretty much typically anytime I ever, you know, see in my career. Feedback, the works meaningful, we would expect there would be feedback as well, rather than a large check across the page. So those just spoke to some of the topics. Go to the next slide. We asked the teachers, just to kind of get a sense of the main reasons, what they were thinking of purpose of assigning homework was. And a lot was practice, and that showed up when we asked, I asked this in groups last year. It's really a lot of it was about practice. 50% teach students to be responsible, which does go to one of the cultural beliefs that we feel like it builds that responsibility. 27% said, "I can't get to all the curriculum during the school day." 17% said, "It's important to extend learning." What I thought was really helpful were the teachers' suggestions. And a lot of those were aligned to what the committee came up with, just about homework being posted, or providing an estimate of how much time is spent on each assignment. Someone suggested they could use PD on how to use homework more effectively, how to align to district measures. So I pulled out a couple examples, so you can see what teachers had come up with. And these, this is from the survey, not from the committee. These were comments and the teachers from the survey. So let's dive into what we came up with for our vision, purpose, and beliefs. So our purpose for homework is assignment educators to be completed by students outside of the classroom in order to reinforce, supplement, and/or extend learning ways that help enrich the school experience. The vision, I'm really impressed by our vision statement. It took a while for us to get to it, but it is about extending and enhancing learning beyond the school day, further engaging them in opportunities for curiosity, inquiry, and active learning. Homework should be personalized to meet individual student needs, while respecting the social emotional wellbeing of students and the diversity of families. A fair amount of this book talks about students who may not have resources at home, students, you know how it's difficult if they don't have the sort of parents' support at home, parents are very difficult late in their working, and how to balance all of that out. And we, the committee felt that was really important to address the diversity of families. First, I also, I do kind of love the document, but I can say, but I really love our beliefs. We worked on those for a while. They believe it should be relevant and meaningful. I love the second one, how it's sparking students' curiosity. We're in inquiry and start lifelong learning. Purpose and objectives should be clearly communicated, and that kind of addresses sometimes when you don't know why you have homework, or parents may not know. Homework related, if you actually individualize depression from family needs. And being, the last one about the sensitivity. I know I don't mean to read everything up here, but I do want to pull out the tears. So, four, basically, we, in our, all of our implementation, we address communication, timing, and grading. Our timing is a lot. So the first area we have up here is addressing communication. So these are our implementation guidelines. We expect that it should be clearly communicated and posted before the end of the school day, so that addresses not the illness we're having. Coordination of dates for tests and long-term projects, when possible. It isn't always possible, but when possible. Maintain an open dialogue amongst administration students, students about success and need, and our frustrations related to homework. The teachers felt like they were doing this already, the teachers on the committee, but felt it was important that we really wanted to have a dialogue and review. It's kind of like, you know, if I'm a parent at home and my child is upset or doesn't understand something, and I'm going to communicate home to the teacher and say, you know, "Struggled a year ago," or "Send an email." That, you want it to be two-way, that we're working on the same page. And also, communicate expectations and procedures for homework completion after student absence. There were some comments that came up in feedback about when students were absent and what that procedure was to be, that's what I did. The next one has to do with timing. The timing, we didn't, like I pointed out before, we didn't give exact times. And you definitely, you can kind of make here a bit to that 10-minute rule in your thinking amount of time, or the research of how it shouldn't go too far, but keeping track and talking to students about the time. We address that it cannot be required if you do the same day as time is assigned. For example, it can't be due electronically, you do by midnight, is an example that was given to us. Homework should not be assigned over legal religious holidays or during school vacations, as recognized by the school committee. And also, we want to be sensitive to the fact that students and families may celebrate religious holidays that may not be formally recognized by the school committee. And homework, this is a practice, the last one is a practice. So in many cases, we were putting things in writing that were already pretty much a practice, but homework will not be assigned on evenings prior to or during the comprehensive state assessment, such as MCAS, like testing periods for the grades involved in testing. The next one. Oh, sorry, I'm continuing. Students should not be obligated to complete classes or launch an assignment to their designated school vacations. We have a plan for completing makeup work within a reasonable amount of time. We have some committee members that felt really strongly to make sure that we put in there that we would not be assigning things that would require actual resources outside of what they wouldn't be accessible for students, including internet and being accessible to that. Being, the last one, this one came up a lot in the feedback that, and it came up really at the Food for Thought, just, I thought, with students saying, "Look, you know, just be mindful. I want to be able to have that conversation with you and say, 'I have this game and this, and this, and this, and can we have some flexibility?'" And some teachers said, "Yeah." Some students said, "Yeah." Some teachers are ready about it, but then there are a couple that go, "No, absolutely not, it's due that day." So we're really hoping for a little bit more of that understanding and flexibility through this one here. But sometimes you have that unexpected event. In most, most cases, a student goes up to a teacher, they're going to be accompanying, they're going to trust them, or you want to put that practice in there. And then, grading, this is, now, grading in general is a whole, whole nother topic for another committee. But, you know, creating a homework assignment is, we definitely had some best practices that we wanted to put into this document. And we felt, and research on homework should contribute to the overall demonstration of mastery, and we do this practice and the extension of learning, not a comprehensive assessment of what a student has learned. Homework should not be a major determinant of a student's overall grade. So that gets into at the secondary level, when it's, you have really high percentages. Homework is not really a high percentage. Hopefully, that will be adjusted as we settle these guidelines. It should be a fundamental determinant of student practice. It should never be used as a consequence or punishment. Now, we had no evidence that had, that had ever occurred. It didn't come in in feedback. That just comes from best practices in other policies, so we just put it in there. Homework should not be weighted grade at the elementary level. It should be used as a way for teachers to monitor progress, check our understanding, and identify areas in need and for the support. And there should be consistency and transparency and weight of students across a grading level at the secondary levels. So, that gets at the consistency issue that we had with some of the grade levels for students. So, finally, the next steps. Go to the next slide. Our first step was to come here and share it with all of you. Our next step is to, and it is in our strategic line of action plans, to share it with all educators in the district. And then, by mid-year, to provide opportunities for educators to review, revise, align current homework practices, align with the guidelines. And so, that would happen through, you know, whatever meetings that you have at a different level. So, it could be grade-level meetings, faculty meetings, you know, department chair meetings. But, to start looking at it and then reviewing your own practice and saying, "Okay, where we fit in there? And where are, there are some questions that we want to work through as a grade level, as a school, with support." To support everyone's understanding, we'll be conducting a book study on reading homework for those people who in the district would like to participate in that, expand their knowledge there. It's a great book, I have it right here in my hand. And then, we're going to continue to monitor our practices across grade levels to ensure that consistency and service open feedback. And at the end of the year, evaluate how it's gone so far and then continue to make adaptations to move into the next school year. This is an immense undertaking. It isn't going to be one fell swoop of, here's the guidelines, now everything we do changes. In many cases, a lot of these won't need to change because a lot of practices, especially at certain grade levels, is already pretty much aligned, but it's a good reminder and active research and the feedback in our district. But you will take time to work through at the different grade levels, what this means to us in our district, at each level, each grade level, each content level. And on that, any questions for the committee? Many of my committee members are here. They can feel free to jump in and answer questions.
I have a question. Just in terms of the, like, there was a fairly large discrepancy in some of the questions for the, between the teachers and the parents, particularly with regard to differentiated homework and feedback. So, I know, you know, you brought up that there's, you know, going to be more open dialogue, but you also mentioned that the teachers kind of felt like they were already addressing that. So, I guess my question is, what will be different going forward, you know, to sort of address that, like, difference in perception between the teachers and the parents?
I think a piece of it probably comes from increased communication around it. And sometimes, I, you're always going to have a gap. They're never, it's never going to be the same. Hopefully, the gap isn't as large. One example is the vacation one. So, you have parents saying, "Yes, I'm reporting that they received homework," because their view of that question is that we're receiving, you know, homework, while the teacher said, "You can have optional homework," and a sheet came home and maybe, so it's interpreted different ways. So, I know some of the data comes from, from that, or maybe a poorly designed question on my part. But I would say, what I've seen other districts do, when they roll out, you know, new guidelines or something, especially on a topic that parents are obviously very interested in, guardians are interested in hearing about, is we need to communicate about these guidelines as well. And so, what I've seen in other districts that we can do is at open houses, you know, next year, at parent-teacher conferences, granted, I know they're coming up soon. So, it's not like we're going to be able to roll that out right now. But by the continuous communication about what it means, that, that will help. But also, the feedback from the parents. So, when we do the evaluation at the end of the year and do feedback across the board, then we can continue to look at it, reflect, and adapt our practices to meet them, to make the changes that are needed.
A general question on some of the research, just as a, you mentioned. So, the research that shows, like, the correlation with achievement, is that sort of, is that an immediate impact? Or is that long-term? Like, are they tracking a bunch of students across years and finding, you know, that the impact?
It was mostly immediate within most of the studies, within that same year. And some of the caution that they gave, which I liked how she kind of looked at the research from her view. The caution was that a lot of those studies didn't address some of the other aspects that influenced achievement. That's why, in many ways, it wasn't necessarily causation of it. And she emphasized, there's a whole chapter, and I thought about putting it in, but I didn't want to make the presentation too long, was all about just teaching practices. So, if you, you know, that the teaching practices and the quality of that teaching has the greatest effect on student achievement. And so, homework, if they're really excellent teachers, then their homework practices are, you know, still going to help, help the students grow, but really, it's, it's the teachers, but you can't account for that in a lot of the studies. So, it's interesting. But I, I'm sure there are some longitudinal studies that were in the mix. Cooper is the one who's done the most research related to homework that everyone references. And he did it about 10 years prior, did it 10 years later, and had, did a meta-analysis of tons of studies and kind of pulled out those key, some of those key points came from that. Research was interesting, although it's been used for different purposes, too. Yeah, exactly. Depending on the argument.
So, Maureen, I noticed that, like, when you were talking about the research, you were saying, as you just said, you could handpick any study to support whatever side you want to go on. But some of, there were some themes, and one of them was, at each grade level, there appears to be a max-optimum amount of homework. Grade six to nine, less than an hour. Grades seven to 12, ninety minutes to two hours. But you didn't build any of the, kind of, those guidelines in? You just said reasonable guidelines. Is there a reason why you chose to kind of keep it broad versus a little bit more specific? Grade-to-grade or elementary level versus middle school versus high school?
A piece, maybe it's my own personal experience, you know, in my previous district, where we put in the time, and then by putting in the time, they, teachers felt they had to give that amount, which was never the intent, because I was there the, you know, 12 years ago when we did it. But that ended up being the result of it, and then they just changed it to not have the time. And so, for me, I guess personally, that was, you know, one area or thought where I thought that we, I didn't personally think we needed the time, but it never, it didn't come up that we wanted to say it was a time.
The only reason why I say that is because, as you pointed out at the beginning, everybody has their own beliefs about homework. And so, what is one person's reasonable, name the one person's unreasonable amount of homework. So, that's the only reason why I pointed out, because if you've got a parent at home going, "Well, why don't you have two hours of homework? That's ridiculous." You know, that is their perception of it. But for that kid, with all the other stuff that they're dealing with, maybe two hours is just too much. You know what I mean? So, I feel like, and believe me, I believe in our teachers and I trust our teachers, that they're going to give us a reasonable amount for, you know, what one person would consider reasonable. But there's always going to be people outside of that. So, I don't know if we need to be more specific, like, giving like a max amount, but saying that, you know, homework isn't necessarily on a nightly basis. This is the purpose of homework, but we just want to make sure our kids aren't overburdened.
So, some of the strategies, one, when we roll this out to the teachers, this is information we're going to share with them, essentially this presentation or pieces of that, to let them know what the research says, so they're aware of that. So, that's going to be a piece of it as well. And also, some teachers are already doing this, but one of the best practices that I had heard related to it is you have teachers who ask the students, "How long are these things taking you?" And kind of monitor and adapt and adjust as they go as well. Because sometimes you assign something, you think it's going to be, "Oh, no, this is only 20 minutes." And then it takes, you know, 45 minutes or an hour. That open dialogue and communication, we want to make sure that that's taking place with the teachers and the students and the parents in order to address that. And it's not going to be a perfect system. I'm sure if I'm taking, I don't know how many APs I can take at the high school, but if I'm taking at a time, if I'm taking four APs at the high school, like, I'm, because I made that choice, my homework's probably going to be a lot more if I'm not. You know, it's not going to fall within a parameter or two, and it varies with different times. So, putting a set time, we don't want to hinder, you know, the teachers, too.
Yeah, but I do understand your, I understand your point on that completely, because you don't want to put down a time and be like, "Well, I got to send home 20 minutes of homework," or 25 minutes, or whatever it may be.
I think a corollary to that, Diane, is I think the strategy of the committee is good in the sense of rolling this out to the district and really empowering teachers. I think it's starting the conversation with teachers, but I see it as powerful. For example, taking a sixth-grade team and them getting together and talking about this, "Okay, maybe this is something that we haven't been as coordinated as we possibly could be. And hey, what does the research say? And how can we coordinate things so that we're ensuring that we are giving kids less than that hour per night? How can we ensure that we're not aligning our assessments so that we're pounding kids every Thursday and Friday," or whatever it looks like? I think, I think the conversation is important, but also empowering teachers to make the reasonable decisions about the specifics. I think part of the slippery slope that you run down when you say, "Okay, this is now policy, and we're going to be very prescriptive about X number of minutes or hours or whatever type of situation." A, you're kind of disempowering the professionals that are close to it. But B, how do you necessarily enforce it? Are we going to have, you know, the homework police within the district kind of enforce it?
You tell, but if you're doing surveys, as you had mentioned, and you're starting to see a trend that a lot of students are like giving you feedback on the amount of homework, and that it has been very difficult for them to juggle, you know, having five days of sports plus another activity plus homework, then you'll, you'll, you'll be able to assess it more in the end.
And I think that's part of the piece that she talked about, that ongoing communication piece is critically important.
I think that's vital. I think that ongoing communication piece about the purpose, about why, like, we're giving you this homework tonight. This is what we're hoping that you're going to get out of it, that you're excited about it. I think that students need to hear that message versus just get a typed assignment that they check in Google Docs and they don't really understand, not necessarily how it relates, but why they're doing it. Because you can see how it relates, you know? But another question that I had, too, which I think is like super important about homework, is feedback on homework. And I didn't, I didn't notice anything that spoke specifically about the type of feedback that students would get on the homework that they were completing. To make sure that, because that's kind of that full loop, like, you've assigned it, they've done it. There should be some sort of, like, learning that comes from it. Did I miss something? Maybe I missed something.
I know it's in our beliefs and vision.
Just some sort of connection. And I, the reason why this is kind of fresh in my brain is because I just had Colby's conference this afternoon, and they were talking about that whole feedback loop, which I was like, "Yay, this is awesome, this is new." And that feedback loop happens not only in homework for this team, but it also happens on tests. And that they give the kids an opportunity to not get a full score, but to gain back some of the points if they approach the teacher and say, "I really didn't understand this, and I really want to make sure I understand it." And all the kids are kind of coming back, and that's the purpose of an assessment, or I'm sorry, that's the purpose of learning, is to walk away with the understanding and not just take the test at the end of the unit, move forward even though you got 25% wrong. And so, that kid just moves forward to the next unit without having the full understanding. So, I kind of feel like homework is the same way. It's like, you know, bring it home and get the feedback from attempting that on your own or practicing on your own or investigating on your own.
Feedback was definitely a big piece of our, I think it's in one of our beliefs. In looking, re-looking at the, under grading, there's a reference to, you know, it's the way it should be used for monitoring progress, checking for understanding.
Yes, about the purpose of homework, I bet you.
Yeah, so I felt like it was in there, but we can, we take a look at it. We, you know, we don't want to require that they give feedback on every single thing, but that it's, that's an important piece of the work. Because that wouldn't be feasible to give, you know, if you were giving every, you know, if you have 100 students, you can't give specific feedback on everything every night. But that the importance of the feedback is essential.
Yeah.
Okay, so I've been waiting for everybody else to have their response before I put them out.
I'm doing great.
Thank you. But I'm like, when am I going to be able to talk? I love the work that the committee did. It, it looks like it, it hits, it's amazing, what an amazing topic. As you said, Joe, when you're talking about so many different variables, you end up getting anecdotal messages from every corner of the universe, and you have no idea what is up.
Sure.
But this committee has been able to, through, really through participation of students, I can tell that voice was in there. You've been able to cough up a lot of the same themes that I experience every day. But I have a whole bunch of, I have a whole bunch of questions about how, how we're kind of dealing with this whole subject. So, when I take a look at, at how we, how we gather information from students, parents, teachers, we're looking at this as there's, there's going to be an ongoing communication between all three, which doesn't happen consistently enough. So, I, I very strongly believe that we should be empowering teachers to do as much as they possibly can. But it really is hard for a teacher to keep up with every situation with every student, to make sure that they have appropriate volumes of homework, appropriate assigned homework. It might, if we think about it, the ideal situation is to have a different homework assignment for every individual. It really is. There, every individual has a different learning method. They have different learning conditions, different families, different backgrounds. They need different ways to learn, right? That's, that's a very complex and very difficult problem to understand and answer. So, personalized learning is way beyond the approach that we're taking. We're sort of thinking of it in the Dark Ages here. If we're talking about personalized learning, you need to have separate metrics for every student. You need to have to understand where their, where their problems may be, where their inadequacies for learning may be, where their most efficient path for learning is. And that's very difficult when you're almost mainstreaming it into the same methodology, right? So, I, I, I looked at this and I gobbled up your book. I, I just consumed every piece of information I could about this. I live it. So, one, one problem we have, I think, is that we're not getting enough metrics about how our students conduct their learning, both at home and at school. So, so for instance, if, if a teacher wanted to know what types of social, emotional problems is my, is this student having with a given assignment or a given subject? What would you want to know from that? You'd want to say, "I think this student is going to take 45 minutes on this homework." And to get feedback on that homework assignment immediately that says, "This student is taking three hours." What does that mean, right? That could mean they're having some sort of, some sort of misunderstanding with the homework. It could mean, and therefore, they might need a direct communication about that. It could mean that they've got some sort of learning problem with that, that type of subject. Or it may be that they're actually, they're showing some sort of personality tendency that really should be uncovered as soon as possible. There's so many different ways that this can be taken. It's understandable, the confusion that it causes. So, my, my perspective on this is, we should be getting metrics. We should be, we should have, to enable our teachers to really support our students, every student, we should be gathering metrics on a real-time basis. When Diane said, you know, "Why don't we survey our students?", that, that survey should be immediate, right when they finish that assignment. It shouldn't be a conversation that happens a week later. It should be, "What is my feedback right now?" It should be, "What is my feedback right now? Did I learn the subject? Did I, did I have a satisfying experience? What did I get from that, that homework?" So that there's an immediate response, right? So, I would, I would think that if we want to, if we want to really kind of move ahead of where the current technology, the current learning experiences are, we really should start to implement more metrics on an individual basis.
I think a couple thoughts back at you. I think one is very, very traditional, and it's very old-school, and it's nothing more than really a teacher knowing his or her kids well. And I think a lot of teachers would say, quite frankly, "Hey, I can check in with my kids and find out, you know, ask, you know, to kind of use that example, did that homework assignment take 20 minutes, or did it take 45, and so on?" So, I think that's one thing. Second piece, though-
Let me just very quickly respond to that. This district in particular has extremely compliant kids and families.
Yeah.
Those, those assignments do not get feedback. They don't. I can, I know this for a fact. I can tell my daughter, "Give people feedback about the pain you're feeling." And it does not happen. I have to, I have to actually force her-
Sure.
-to go in and complain about this. And I think you're going to get that from many families. It's not just mine.
Yeah.
So, I think, I respect what you're saying, because I think that's true. The teacher really, to be empowered, though, I think the teacher does need to have more feedback.
And I think my part B is kind of more of what you're thinking. I think we have to take long, hard looks at different, simple systems that are out there. And, you know, and we've talked about Jack Schneider's group, the Massachusetts Consortium for Innovation in Assessment. But I think looking at, you know, different quick push-pulls, polls that could be sent out to kids or to parents vis-à-vis tests, something, you know, that, I think, would be a metric that's powerful. Do I think we need to be doing that on a daily basis? Probably not. I think that's not viable. But if you could have even four, six, eight pieces of data that directly speak to homework and time and rigor and so on, communication, I think that's helpful towards the end that you're describing.
Yeah, I agree with that. I agree with that. Even if we start out small.
Yeah.
Because I completely agree with the idea that we have to evolve with the changing conditions, right? So, if you have, I mean, even a, even a societal event can cause problems within students that you don't anticipate, or problems within learning that you don't anticipate. So, I completely agree with that. Start out small, see if you need something extra, because just bombarding with metrics is not the solution. But there's, there's so many things, like, working in a group environment. That's something we actually don't teach how to do that, or what the different strategies are, or what the different personality types are. Instead, we kind of immerse them in a team environment, say, "Go for it." "What if I have a kid who's not doing their share?" "Deal with it. Deal with it. I don't know how you deal with it. Deal with it." And then, oh, what happens if, what happens if nobody's coordinated around the dates to get things done? Well, deal with it, right? There are actually real strategies for dealing with workplace environment situations that are written down and codified, and we don't really teach that. We just immerse them in the environment, these young kids who really don't know anything about that. And they're, they're saddled with major traumatic problems because they don't want to piss off, you know, they're dealing with their child. They don't know how to deal with these guys. So, you know, at a sixth-grade level, I'm not sure you have, you should have to be dealing with that situation. So, there are, there are a lot of different comments I have about this, and a lot of different tendrils of conversation that I don't want to get into now. But I would say, after all of this, this is such a good piece of work, we really need to start examining it further. And really with the theme, as you said, of enabling our teachers to really have what they need to make the homework effective and to make it more efficient for each kid to learn.
I think it also, you know, we always talk about connection, a teacher's connection with their kids. I think when it comes to homework and personalizing homework, there's never a time then that it's, well, there's so many different times that it's so important, but it is a very important factor in being able to personalize homework for a kid. Like, if you know that my child has ADHD, which I have a child who has ADHD, and you send them home with three pages of writing, that's just torture. That's all I have to say. Like, it's just, it doesn't fit what works best for them to learn. So, it's just a lesson in frustrations. So, that's a perfect example of when to personalize homework and maybe take a different approach. And, you know, instead of writing about, you know, some aspect of a science experiment, maybe giving them a similar science experiment that kind of shows the same principle. Or watching a YouTube video, or whatever it may be, that speaks to that person's individuality versus-
I mean, there are subjects that are so deep in the level of understanding. Just, just the ability to write effectively takes you down so many different paths. It's very difficult for an English teacher to manage every path of making a student go to write.
Yeah, there's pragmatic, there's many pragmatic considerations here.
Right, swell, right.
It's, so, this is, this is a fabulous document, and you can see the amount of work. And like, every statement, I'm like, because I read it last night, and I'm like, "Oh, my God, this is so awesome. This is so great." Like, very excited about it. But practically making it work is going to have to be a feedback loop. The communication and the feedback loop to make sure that we're actually doing and being respectful of everything that is in here so that we can really positively impact student learning.
So, if, if I could propose that we have some sort of, some sort of follow-up session to kind of develop how we're going to approach this and the strategy for how we're going to roll it out?
That's wise.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next topic on the agenda is the approval of a World Challenge trip to Morocco in July 2020.
Okay, you have in your pocket the approval request from Courtney Lisha, who is a mathematics teacher extraordinaire here, and who knows everything about the right amount of homework to administer as well.
I had a lot of comments during that section that I would keep to myself.
But Courtney, Courtney, you've run the last, is it two or three World Challenge trips?
Meg and I have done the last two, so this is the third one.
Yep.
Third destination that, you know, we're proposing for, for our tenure in being the World Challenge reps. But we've actually been working with the World Challenge company for, this will be our 16th year. And in 16 years, this is our ninth time coming to the school committee asking if we could have your blessing to take kids on another two-week learning experience. So, for those of you who aren't familiar with the World Challenge trips, it's pretty much broken up into three components. It's a, it's a wilderness trip. It's, we're hiking, we are going grocery shopping, we're cooking our own food, we're doing community service. We're, you know, for our trekking portion of the trip, we're carrying all of our food and water and everything on our backs, and we're going into the wilderness for four days at a time, setting up tents, purifying water, working as a team. And so, our trips are three, three portions. It's a community service portion in country. It's usually around a four or five-day trek where we are backpacking through the wilderness of the country. And then, at the very end, we usually have a little time for some sort of R&amp;R cultural experience. It's too bad Lily had to go home, or that we are so far back on this agenda, but Lily actually traveled with us this past summer to Iceland, where we did two weeks of Iceland. So, it was a phenomenal experience. And when we got back, we actually had a parent email. I think I forwarded it to Jo and John and Mary Ann saying how her daughter who traveled to Iceland had not stopped talking about it in the weeks that she's been home. And she came home from the experience a grown woman. Like, she was more self-confident, she was more vocal, she was more reflective. There's a whole learning piece that goes along with our travels where we don't actually tell the students how to solve their problems. You know, we get dropped into the country, and we're like, "Who's hungry? Like, we got some money here, like, what are we going to do with it?" And, you know, they have to figure out and, and make a plan and work as a team to basically get us to survive in country for two weeks. You know, we do have a budget, we do have an itinerary that we want to follow. But there's a lot of things that are left up to student control and student choice. And though we're there to guide them and to protect them, we ultimately will let them fail on the trip. One of my favorite failures we've had in our travels is, we went to the grocery store. We were buying food to go on a five-day hike in Belize. And, oh, no, a four-day hike in Belize. And so, the students were in charge of designing their menu for what we're going to eat, you know, for four days, what we could carry, what we could, you know, preserve for four days. And they decided they were going to do cereal and powdered milk for breakfast. That was their choice. So, they, we see them in the cereal aisle, and we're like, "Oh, what are you guys getting?" You know, you talk to people about what they liked, and they're like, "Yeah, we're going to get, uh, four boxes of cereal. Should last us four days." And we're looking at each other like, "Okay, there's like 17 of us. Like, how are you figuring that out?" And they're all like, "Well, we looked at the serving size on the box of cereal, and we multiplied that by, you know, we have four, 17 people. With four days, we need 68 servings of cereal, so that's four boxes of cereal." So, me and Meg look at the kids and we're like, "What's a serving size?" They're like, "Half a cup." "All right, well, we're going to take a guess here, high schoolers, that you eat maybe two cups of cereal a day when you sit down in the morning for breakfast." They're like, "Look at this, it's four boxes of cereal." A little bit, we're like, "All right." Like, you know, we set our pace, and then we just let them do this stuff, right? So, it's within reason. You know, we were a little hungry for breakfast by the end of the trip. We're like, dust, you know, crumbs into our bowls to try to make a bowl of cereal, but that's the type of learning experiences that we have out there. So, as long as they're making choices that are safe, and nobody's in danger, and we're not going to starve to death or be dehydrated. You know, we keep them in control there. But otherwise, we're putting it in their hands to work as a team and reason things out, and we'll give our advice if they ask for it, or sometimes when they don't. But ultimately, they make these choices, and as a team, we live with them and we work around them. And I do think it's a very beneficial, modern learning experience. Morocco would be a new destination for us. So, in your packets, we did include just some, some notes about World Challenge's history with Morocco. They've actually been using it as a destination since 1990. We just, we've never chosen it before. So, they've been doing this trip for around 30 years, and they've had 850 teams go through Morocco in that time. So, it's a, it's a finely tuned trip by this point. We're really looking forward to the opportunity if you guys also feel that it's, it will be as beneficial as we do. And normally, sometimes we, depending on the country, like in Iceland, we did take public transportation places. But in Morocco, it is actually all private transportation. We don't actually take any public transportation there, it's all pre-booked. And in terms of the cultural sensitivities about traveling to Morocco, as we lead up to the trip, that's something that we teach the students about in terms of proper attire and things you can and can't wear when you're in a country like Morocco that does have, you know, dress expectations for men and women. It's all part of the learning experience leading up to our travels.
Thank you.
I don't know if anyone has any questions, or-
Cool.
Yeah, it is cool.
Okay, we need a motion to approve the trip?
Motion to approve the trip.
Second.
Any others in favor?
Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to correspondence, there any correspondents?
No, there is none.
Okay. Are there other matters not anticipated by this committee within 48 hours? Okay, hearing none. Future agenda items include the annual evaluation of superintendent of the school committee on November 19, and the Spanish immersion program evaluation report on December 10. Anybody who would like to say a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any others in favor?
Aye.
The meeting is adjourned at 8:48.